County will be evaluating their program because of the changes in the law and the new implementation. Maybe we can plan for something in the spring to, or the early summer to...
I'd have to hold him, keep him from wanting to make that report because he's made that report several times and as you know, you get turnover. And Ms. Mike Williams had a wonderful report from him that I sat and listened through. But absolutely, that's the key.
We've been in this partnership for three years now. And every year, our statistics remain the same. Attendance is up, grades are up, discipline's down. Everybody's working together, the principals, the counselors. We're getting these kids counseling, substance abuse counseling, mental health counseling, any type of services they need. Plus, we're working hands-on-hand with the parent. We're holding the parent accountable also. Parents go to parenting classes sometimes.
Right. So, and I don't know, is the law has changed what your, you know, what that'll mean for the program going forward? But I think we want to be financially conservative and spend our money wisely and make sure that, as you said, that somebody, there aren't people sitting around, you know, knitting sweaters, but we're actually helping kids stay in school.
Absolutely.
So, I think that's what our goal is. And I just want to be clear about that. And I would like someone to make a note so that we can be sure to hear back from you at the end of the school year, so that when this comes up again, we'll know and we'll understand exactly where we are.
Be glad to.
And one of our commissioners wanted to drop the magistrate court and create a justice of peace court, which we can do, but we can't tell that justice of peace to have court from 3:00 in the afternoon till 9:00 at night. And we can tell the magistrate to have it at that time of day. So...
Well, that's good because we don't, if kids are having trouble attending school, we don't want them to have to miss anymore. All right. Do we have any more questions for Mr. Patterson? Thank you so much for being here. And Mr. Dobbs, thank you for coming. And I'm not sure who your friend is, but...
Brad Slater.
Brad Slater, thank you for being here tonight also. We appreciate it.
I had one more comment if I can.
Yes, sir.
We met with the Legislative Budget Board and they were all struck on the collaboration that the district, my juvenile board, and the commissioners had, working together for truancy, to resolve truancy. So, I hate for that partnership. The kids would be the ones to suffer for that partnership ending. Our job is to work ourselves out of a job. We don't want any of these kids to become delinquent. We have enough delinquent kids as it is. And that's why this program was set up. That's why it's been running for seven years. And that's why it works.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir, very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hollinger?
In the lieu of time, in essence of time, rather, I move that we adjourn this meeting and only take any public comments that might still be here.
What's my motion? No seconds? We have a motion to postpone the rest of the items to next week. Is that what you're suggesting, Ms. Hollinger?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I can't.
We don't have a second, so we'll have, we'll continue on for a little bit longer. All right. We are on item 7B, number two, the memorandum of understanding for the substance abuse Fort Bend Regional Council on substance abuse, which is page 96. Do we have any questions on that? All right. Hearing none, we'll keep going. Do we have questions regarding the memorandum of understanding with Houston Community College? And I think I do, and I'm not on the correct page anymore, so... We're on the Houston Community College memorandum of understanding, 7B3, which I'm operating from last week's. I'm doing this one, I don't know what number that is. 27. Because I have three of them. Doggone it. No, this one's yours. Okay. Leave it here. Sorry. Okay. Do we have a question on that one?
I'm trying to understand a little bit better. These dual credit programs are going to be offered in every high school campuses? Or what are the plans?
They will be offered on a demand basis. And, you know, we have certain schools that are in the Horton County zone and others that are in the HCC zone. The thing that is unique about this, I think, that really will help our students is that we have a number of students who have difficulty passing the TSI that we referred to before, whereas they could study and pass coursework that they know what the assignments are, but they may just not test very well. And in the past, under, before House Bill 5, the juniors and seniors could not take a college prep class that prepared them to take this test to enter high school. It wouldn't count toward high school credit with the state. So, if they took a preparatory class, it didn't count for a math credit or an English credit, even though they were doing that. With House Bill 5, they can now earn that credit, the freshmen and sophomores, not the juniors and seniors. And this particular MOU opens the door for our freshmen and sophomore to sign up to take that college course through HCC. And they can actually make that count as a fourth math or a fourth English ELA, which keeps them in that higher graduation plan. And the courses are offered free to the kids who live in the HCC zone. I don't know why that's hard to say, it's late. Sorry. And they also agree to share the data about how those students do in that preparatory class. So, they get credit, they get the college testing course, and if they stay at HCC, that exemption from having to pass that test to take college coursework stays in place as long as they take that course.
Dr. Hill, which campuses does this apply to?
This applies to Marshall, Elkins, High Tower, Willeridge, and Progressive High Schools.
Okay. Okay.
They're in the HCC zone.
Right.
So, all of the entire district, all of their attendance boundaries are, for, the entire attendance boundary for all of those schools is in HCC?
Well, HCC serves students in those zones. I can't say that every single boundary area is...
You know, all these sites is not because of what happens.
I think in actuality, there are some students who attend Willeridge, for example, who are not necessarily HCC. I'm not sure.
Actually, the thing about the Missouri City area is served by HCC for a, you know, so, for example, Ridge Point is in Missouri City, but I don't think it is covered under...
Right. They're in the Horton County in the other MOU.
Okay. So, I'm always been a big supporter of dual credit programs and I'm glad to see that we are taking to the next step.
This summer, we worked very hard to try to get, for example, we had a number of students who attended Willeridge that we wanted to lead into a dual credit course. And there is difficulty getting that preparation, and these were juniors and seniors. But as now with House Bill 5, we can begin to open that opportunity for that preparation.
Is that possible, maybe next year, we would be able to get an update on how we did, how many, the success ratio on children, how that program worked in that area?
Yes, sir. We can give you an update. I think that because we are currently in process for this school year, that it's going to take us a couple of years to really realize the benefit of this because it doesn't apply to all, you know, freshman through seniors. We only have two grade levels that can really take advantage of that, and they're already in process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I don't think so. All right. Moving on then to the memorandum of understanding with Horton County Junior College regarding the College Connections Program. We have questions on this agreement. You do...
I'm just trying to understand. What is exactly a College Connection Program?
Very briefly, this particular program or MOU opens the door for a pilot program. And the pilot begins with Kempner and Ridge Point. And in essence, what it does is there is a, an application that's Applied Texas Application. And students can fill out one application online and it applies to any state school. And so, the first session is to take those two high schools and to make sure that all of their seniors know how to do that and get that accomplished. We also talked about, it talks about helping them with testing. And remember that we talked about the TSI in the previous MOU. And this particular MOU helps to reduce that fee because when students take the TSI, there's a charge for that. And Horton County will proctor the test. The testing fee is decreased from $29 to $11. And with that $11 per student fee, we can have 800 vouchers to take this test, 400 for Kempner, 400 for Ridge Point. And we don't believe that they will use all of those because they only have about 500 and something, I think seniors apiece. So, they anticipate that we will have some leftover vouchers, and those would then be equally distributed with Austin, Bush, Clements, and Travis, which are the high schools that are in the Horton County zone. And then this goes into the next two phases. And one phase will serve the same model with three of the additional high schools. And then the following year, the next two high schools. But it's not determined yet which high schools will be in which phase. But they'll replicate that pilot so that all of those schools will eventually have all of the students so that they know how and they're applying to, through that universal application. And if they sign up, if they apply to go to Horton County, then they get that support for the TSI testing. And so, that would help them with that. The other thing is in the third session, there's a form that the government requires that you fill out, the FASDA form. And you can't get financial aid through the government unless you fill out that form. And they also will help the students after they get these other steps in completing that form. And very often, the government kind of supports students on a first come, first served basis. So, it's very important to get those forms filled out, get them submitted early. And a lot of families do not have the knowledge to, or know, that they need to hurry and do that. They're thinking their children aren't going to school for several months. And so, it's educating parents, educating families, and providing the tools for that easy access to college.
Also, FAFSA is need-based also, right?
Yes, it is. The financial aid is, the FASDA form. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions on that? All right. Then let's move on to 7C. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm working on two pieces of paper. This is affiliation agreement between Fort Bend ISD and Texas State University. Do we have questions on this? I have a comment or a, I have a question and I have a comment slash concern. What other affiliation agree, with what other universities do we have affiliation agreements for student teaching?
I actually had a, I had a full comprehensive list, but for some reason, I can't locate it. But we have University of Houston, HBU, Prairie View, Texas A&amp;M, Texas State, Texas Southern. And basically, what they, they wanted to ensure is that, you know, they go through the program, they get credit for what they're doing so they can finish their coursework. So, that's the reason we have the agreements.
Okay. Well, I think that's great, and I'm more than happy to have these types of agreements. As part of this recommendation, we have a statement that will approve this recommendation as well as any future affiliation agreements with colleges, universities, or alternative certifications programs for similar educational student teaching training programs. What's that? I guess I just think that's pretty, that's a shift from what we've been doing. So, I was wondering if there's an explanation from that? And then, I guess I'll just wait for the explanation.
It's to enable us to more effectively move the work forward because this is the kind of thing we need to be able to have these agreements in place at the beginning of the year when possible. And often, the universities don't approach us with their need until a little later. So, now you can see we're already in mid-September and they're ready to begin placing. And the board has taken the similar action on other types of affiliation agreements for other areas that don't really require any dollar expenditure. So, we felt we would seek approval in this event as well.
Okay. And so, would we, how would we get updates or how would we know about these affiliation agreements? Or, and how do we know? How would we know if we go forward with this like this?
Oh, it's like we do with other things. We would provide, provide you an update in your weekly report about any agreement like that that's been executed.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions about that? Comments? All right. Moving on then to the agreement between Fort Bend ISD and the Safe and Civil Schools. Any questions on that? I know you have a question, Mrs. Tosan.
I'm deciding it's worth asking us.
Yes, it's worth asking because we're here. And who knows when we'll talk about it next? Don't make me ask all the questions. That's pretty much what I'm saying.
Ask them now.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, I think I may have even asked these questions last year at this time about this. So, these are, it says it's five cohorts totaling 46 schools. Is that correct? Where we're implementing, I guess I'm trying, there's a difference in CHAMPs and foundations, correct?
CHAMPs is the classroom model. Foundations would be in the less structured settings, hallways, cafeteria, assemblies, and so forth.
And we're using CHAMPs across the districts in all of our classrooms. Is that correct?
CHAMPs is the district's model for positive behavior support. Not all campuses are implementing foundations, but we are implementing CHAMPs. And we, that's our goal, is to have it implemented in every classroom.
Have CHAMPs implemented in every classroom?
That's our goal.
Okay. So, why isn't foundations being implemented in every school?
I believe that CHAMPs has not, that's separate training. It's not the same training, and I think they just have not, my, my understanding is that all schools have not had training for the foundations.
But all schools have had training on CHAMPs?
They have, but with attrition and turnover, that's an ongoing process. And that's what they talk about because they can only take so many groups through at once because it's multiple-day training with the consultant.
So, behavior continues to be one of my concerns. And so, I'm just putting that out there that, you know, I think it's really important that we get all of our teachers trained because actually, I think a lot of things can be remedied in the classroom if we have teachers that are trained in handling various behaviors. And that can put an end to a lot of problems, not only that students are having, but that teachers are having. So, yes, when I read this, I had a lot of questions around the training and what our plan is to make sure all of our teachers are trained in the classrooms. But I also feel like they should be trained on foundations if this is what we're going to use in our common areas. Because otherwise, what, I mean, so the law requires PBIS be implemented for students in special education. That's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we use district-level behavior specialists for things like that. But really, if we can train our teachers and they can do the work as it happens on the ground, in the classrooms, in our hallways, in our common areas, then we don't have the lag time, so to speak.
I believe when you talk about the 46 sites and the cohorts, one of the things that Mr. Ewing has done is to restructure his department because we were having difficulty getting the training out. And they are, that's a goal, is to provide more training and on a broader scope because that was a challenge.
In our classrooms?
To get the training out with the growth and attrition and...
Well, I would like, I'm going to continue to encourage us and really press us to do that because I really feel like there are a lot of kids that can be served much better if we have teachers who are trained to handle those behaviors on the spot and who can, you know, just know what steps to take at that moment. And if we want our kids to meet their full potential, then that's, that's a big piece of the puzzle in my mind.
I agree. Thank you.
I'm going to add to that because one of the things that stood out to me was how these cohorts were organized because in my mind, I thought, oh, well, we'll do it, it would be by feeder pattern. So, you'd have some alignment, you know, and consistency for students as they would go through a feeder pattern. In other words, I don't know, it just seemed logical to me, again, like using that word. So, I guess my thinking is, is that how do we, how do we have that logical progression so we have consistency as children move through our well-aligned feeder patterns? Or do we?
Well, at this point, I'll step up on that because I asked about that when we put this together. And what I was told, as you can see, there's run cohort six this year, so this goes back before this leadership team. And at that time, it was voluntary.
Okay.
And so, that's, it was started two years voluntarily. It's kind of continued in that way. And so, to this, at this point, to try to go back and restructure it into feeder patterns would be very, I think it would be challenging. I mean, our goal truly is to get every campus fully up to speed as quickly as possible. But the capacity of the department to oversee and train with fidelity is just not feasible at this point. So, they're trying to do it as, you know, in chunks.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I didn't feel better that you guys didn't totally miss some sort of coordination effort.
Some of the, some of the cohorts, the training is complete.
Right.
And so...
Right. So, and some is, some is just starting.
Right. So, the foundations is voluntary?
Yes. That's what...
Foundations is voluntary at this time because the focus has been on the classroom, on trying to get the, the other, the CHAMPs.
What does our data show us on how foundations is working in these schools?
Well, it varies. It's working great at Fort Settlement, but our discipline overall is low at Fort Settlement as an example. And so, I, I think because the, the data and the implementation is inconclusive, it's difficult to say how much that feeds into it. I do think, having visited campuses that have foundations, I think it helps. And it's certainly our goal to replicate that and to, to train broadly.
So, are we...
It's just a matter of time and emphasis because we also, when you have new teachers coming on, you want to get those teachers up to speed.
Right. So, is it our goal to have foundations at all campuses?
At this time, foundations has been voluntary. The CHAMPs is spread through the cohorts and then, but we are increasing foundations as, for example, if I had done CHAMPs and...
But Phyllis, yes, the answer is it will not be voluntary always.
Thank you. That's what my question was.
It is...
We have early adopters, but everyone will be fully on board.
There you go. Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Any more questions on this? So, we're moving on now to item D, which is the Teacher Evaluation Support System. And I remember this, we're doing a pilot. I've forgotten which schools it is. Is it in our thing? Where...
Willow Ridge and Austin feeder patterns?
Willow Ridge and Austin feeder patterns. Okay. All right. Do we have questions about this one? All right. Moving on then, we're to the budget amendment, 7E. All right. We have some questions on this. Mr. Bassett?
Okay.
We'll start with Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, I'd like to just get an explanation of what you're talking about here. I've never done this ones before, but...
What we do, what we do every year at the beginning of the year in the first budget amendment is to add to the budget the POs that are rolled forward from the following, from the prior year. And so, that's typically what's done. Last year, that amount was over $9 million. It was, it was much higher than usual. This year, it's, it's much more in line. Typically, I was looking at the other years, it's kind of been in the $7 million range. That's why nine was a little bit surprising. But, but we're even lower than that this year.
So, stuff we've purchased but haven't paid yet?
It's stuff that, that are, things that are in the works that we'd committed to, but they hadn't been received and...
The money hasn't gone out the door.
That's, that's exactly right. So, like athletics, all the helmets that were ordered, it's those kinds of things. You're not going to receive them until later, but you have to make those commitments much earlier. So, it's, it's that kind of thing.
Thank you.
So, when we, in June, when we moved these things, we moved, we did some, it seemed like we did something to identify these things in June, or we talked about it at least. Maybe we didn't take any action.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So, I mean, we have that, we have that as...
Put it in a general, general fund, and now we're just taking that and assigning it to...
We're adding it to the budget as the authorization is spent, okay? And so, that's because we know that those, those items are going to be coming in, in the current year. And so, what, what happens is that we always have at next, next May and June, there's orders that'll be made against the budget at that time, but then we don't receive these. So, it's kind of a rolling, it's a phenomenon that happens every year. It's the rolling.
Right. So, we saw this once before, when we saw this in May or June this past year, did something come before the board with these amounts and this information that was moved? And now, we're just changing the functions on it or what's happening?
No. What, what happened was is we tell, we tell you at that time what we're expecting from a, I, I'm not using the right term, it's assigned and unassigned. It, we, we tell you at that time what we're expecting.
Okay. And it sort of moves to the fund balance or something that...
Yes. I'm using the term designated, but I know that we changed those, we changed those terms a couple of years ago.
Steve, I think the budget, I think what she's thinking about is the budget amendment where we have projected what revenue's going to be for the end of the year. And then, we spread that among all the functions so that we don't overspend any one function. And then, we spread that among all the functions so that we don't overspend any one function.
Okay.
That's very different than this. At that point in time, all we're doing is, is putting a cushion on each function so we don't violate the law and overspend a function.
Yeah, I don't think I'm thinking of that. I think I'm thinking of this, but I'm, what, I understand what this is, so.
You think you're talking about the fund balance assignments.
Right. But I don't know that that's, okay, well, let's not worry about it. We're, these are the things that were held over, that were ordered in.
Ordered in late summer.
Before the end of the fiscal year. And now, it's the next fiscal year, so we need to assign the money to the appropriate functions to pay for the things that we bought.
Right. We're rolling those items over. We're not really changing those functions because we knew, like athletics was in function 36 before. And so, we're bringing that over and it's still in function 36.
Right.
Okay? And so, we're, we're not really changing the functions of those items that were ordered because we knew, we knew then at that time.
We're just adding it to the 15.
16 budget.
16 budget.
But I, at this time, I still feel very strongly, we will end the year on a break-even basis, even though we're adding to the budget.
Okay. Well, that's good news, Mr. Bassett. Very good news. I hope you can tell us that all year long.
It's my intent.
All right. Do we have any other questions about this? All right. Let's move on then to the donations exceeding $10,000. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes. This may be a first, where we had a big discussion about one of these items, but I think we need to.
Yep.
I think that on the Colony Meadows structure, I don't think it's necessarily, necessarily our decision to say whether some project is a good idea or it's worth it. But I think in this case, I think there's been a lot of anxiety around that, that campus and the neighborhood. And I think we've seen two sides of, of an argument, and I see points on both sides. And I think the request last week from Mr. Scott was that with the new administration and a new PTO in place, that there at least, this thing at least, just go back to the table for some more discussion and to make sure everybody's on board with this and it's, it's done all above the board. And I don't see any reason to, I guess, deny this at this time and let that process happen and let that community work, work these things out so that we're not kind of making the decision
So, let me clarify what I heard you say. So, you're suggesting that we not accept the donation and let them work through it again?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think that was a reasonable request that we heard last week. I think we may see some of the other side tonight, hear some of the other side tonight too. But rather than, than put this on us and keep all that contention in the community, let, I, I, I think that with new people in place, let them go back and kind of work that out. And then, if the same recommendation comes out, then we'll, we'll accept it. I just think this is.
Mr. George, could you please turn your microphone on?
Yeah, I was just saying, I agree with what Dave said, you know? Absolutely, I agree with that.
Ms. Hollinger.
I would agree because when I looked at both sides of it, I, I saw some opportunity for different types of questions, you know, with the survey, those kinds of things, you know? So, I think maybe if, if the PTA and the community get back together and really have a, a good form of dialogue on what is really needed from the, from the school, for the school, and then kind of just make that final decision, I would agree to that. Because there was lots of opportunity based on one survey to ask, you know, is this wanted? But then, there wasn't a question about, here's the options, those kinds of things. So, just, just to make sure that they have a proper dialogue within the community.
Thank you. Ms. Tossan.
So, I, I would tend to agree as well because I don't want to get into the local politics, so to speak, of the school. So, in my mind, there were two questions, is, is it safe? And was it properly brought to the board? I, I think that Chief Ryder has told us, there are no concerns about safety. So, my second question is, was it properly brought to us? And we've seen the investigative report and, but we've heard both sides. And so, I, I agree with new people in place and the new administrator there, perhaps it can just run its course one more time and it may be back right here again. And then, the community and the PTO and the school can have made that decision cleanly, hopefully.
All right. One of the things that was brought up last week about this was our board policy. And I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't look it up, but I don't know exactly what our board policy says about these types of donations. But maybe that's in, something we should put on the to-do list to double-check that, that it defines properly the guidelines or expectations around these types of donations so that it makes it clear what, how we want to handle these things in the future. Mr. Rice.
Well, I was just going to ask the question since we've got a lot of time remaining. The, it's my understanding that the construction department has reviewed the plans for that covering, correct? And, well, that was in the report.
Okay.
And so, I'm just wondering, what, what reason does, would the board have not to accept this donation? That's just a question.
All right. Mr. Rosenthal, would you like to?
Just, just basically from, from some of the discussion that has been brought before us and, and just out there in the community over the last several months. And again, just from reading one side versus the other side, it just sounds like maybe things weren't properly discussed, maybe things weren't like Mr. George said, or somebody said that the options weren't all presented on the table. It seemed like it went from an original idea of a, of a little sun thing and all of a sudden, now there's this big metal structure. I don't think it's a question of the thing being safe or, I just, I just want to see the groups go back together, get back together and discuss it to make sure that this is what the majority of people want. I don't think it's, it's, yeah, I don't want to be going around telling PTOs what they can do and what they can't do. That's, I just, in this particular case, it just seems like there's a lot of anxiety out there. And I think, like, the request came last week to just let them go back and discuss it. If the same outcome comes out, then, then, you know, that's fine.
All right. Do we have any more questions on that one or comments? All right. And any comments on any of the other donations on that list? All right. So, now, we're to purchasing. Ms. Hollinger.
I just wanted to make a comment. Kudos to the PTOs for raising that kind of money. And I want to know how to raise that for some of the schools on my side of the county. So, kudos to those PTOs.
Well, Ms. Hollinger, we have this conversation a lot, some, that sometimes, some schools in our district do a great job raising money and others have a little more of a struggle with that. But we don't want that to mean that we have schools, some that have a lot of advantages and other schools that have, don't have those same advantages. And we want there to be equity, no matter how good the PTO and how organized and how much money a particular school can raise. So, we have this conversation a lot and we've understood that our administration is committed to having equity at our schools. And that's, we've, as a board, have said and want to be clear that that's what our expectation is.
Yeah, we've, we've talked in the past, and I'll just bring it up again since you brought that up, about having mentorships between our schools. Because we do have schools that are able, because of the number of volunteers they have, or just the amount of money that they're able to tap into, can raise lots of money, whereas other schools don't. They lack that volunteer support and they lack the financial support. So, we've talked in the past about trying to create mentorships between schools. And that's, I'll just put that out there again, that that's something I'd really love to see between our schools. So that, I mean, you know, mentoring with volunteer hours, mentoring with financial dollars, and how can we help some of our other schools that don't get these kinds of structures but bake in the heat? Or the little kids sit up under the little awning and don't play at recess because they don't have that covering that's at my school. So, but yeah, I think that mentoring type program would be, would be beneficial all the way around for all schools.
I would agree. For anyone that's listening to this board meeting, I encourage us as we sign up for volunteers to reach out besides our own comfort zone and our own communities to, to make sure that all of our children are receiving that type, same type of support.
Thank you, Ms. Hollinger. All right. We're on to the purchasing items, which is 7G. Our first one is active, the Active Care Diabetes Program. Do we have any questions on this? This indicated, I have a question. I didn't even look over here. You guys have questions, sorry. Just jumping right in. This indicated that our current benefits program doesn't provide glucometer and test strips and testing supplies for the, our people with diabetes?
Oh, those are all provided, but, but right now, folks with, that are high-risk with diabetes, they're, they're paying for those themselves. And they, you know, they're paying on their copays and everything. And it can be quite expensive for them. If they, if they elect to go into this program where they're getting the, the ongoing monitoring, those things will be provided for them without, without payment.
So, that's kind of the incentive for them to do this?
Exactly.
And then, the benefit to us is that they manage their diabetes better?
And it's real-time monitoring. That, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. And the benefits committee was?
Very, very overwhelmingly supportive of this one.
All right. And this cost is a fixed cost? Or is it a cost per user? In other words, we only pay for the people that sign up or do?
This is approximately based on the number of users we're expecting. And so, we're, we're not going to pay above and beyond the, the usage.
But we pay per user. If we have three people sign up, we pay for three people. If we have 1,000 people sign up, we pay for 1,000 people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's not a fixed, it's not a fixed amount.
It's variable. That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Mr. George, your lights on, you know?
I was.
You're anticipating the next one?
Next one.
All right. Go ahead. Ask your question.
Yeah, the item number two, I see that it's going to save a lot of money, you know?
We hope so.
For the, is that specifically for the school district or the premium of the participants?
On the Surgery Plus?
Yeah.
Well, we think it's, we think it's a win-win. I mean, if somebody does an elective surgery through Surgery Plus, their incentive is that they actually won't have any copays. They won't, they won't, I mean, their out-of-pocket will be zero. As opposed to if they, if they do a knee replacement, for example, right now, they're, they're paying thousands of dollars.
Yeah. And it, it looked like the cost is going to be almost half.
That's, that's, that's correct. That's, that's what the, the proposals are. And so, you know, with the, with the very limited network of, with surgeons that do this on a regular basis, they're selected with, due to high quality and low complication rates. And part of the thing is they get their money right away. I mean, there, there's not any kind of adjudication of claims or anything like that. These, these folks get paid right away.
So, that's their incentive?
Yes.
Okay. And it, do we, I mean, is that a program we are buying or that, as I said, an insurance we are buying or a membership we are buying?
It's a network we're, we're, we're buying into.
Okay, okay. So, it's more like a participation or a membership?
Right, right. Because we are going to be paying, now, this is where we are paying a fixed amount, hoping that it is getting used. But, but I think the, the payoffs are, are certainly going to be there.
And, and definitely it benefit our.
Right. No, exactly. And we're not forcing any, any, any of our members, employees or their dependents to, to use this. I mean, this is specifically an option that's out there for them. If they want to go the traditional way, they're more than welcome to.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bassett, do you know how many of these surgeries would fall into this category that we did last year or in the last fiscal year?
I don't have that offhand, but I mean, it's hundreds. I mean, it's, it's.
Okay. So, there's a potential of a pretty good savings for us.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right. Oh, my goodness. All right. Y'all need to get a little more sleep because we're going to be late all over the weekend to handle your long meetings. All right. Moving on, we're on to item number three, which is, got some initials and I don't remember what they stand for. MHBT.
MHBT is, is the firm that we use, our consulting firm, okay? They have these services, they've provided for other, other clients that they, that they service. These along with, these two along with the others, we're all discussed with the benefits committee, had a lot of discussion. These generated a bit more discussion than the others. The, we have made one change on the Engage mobile app. We're actually going to reduce that cost down to 96,000. Instead of paying for 8,000 members, we originally were going to propose that, that it was mandatory for folks to download the app. The pilot was, was very well-received, but the committee didn't want to go with the mandatory route. The committee just wanted to make it available for folks. And so, we didn't, to go against those wishes. And so, we reduced the, the potential users. And so, we'll, we're, we're competent with some incentives that are, that are going to be put in that will have a, a large number of downloads, especially with the, you know, the, you know, the millennials as they're coming in, they're, they're definitely using the, the technology like this more, more often. And so, that cost is going to come down from the 192,000 to the 96,000. We had a lot of discussion on the Engage Health Services. And so, that's the one where the, the nurses are actually going to be calling folks that are considered to be at risk. And after having, you know, a couple of meetings on, on those, when we asked for feedback last week from all the benefit committee member reps, 88% of, of those responses were favorable with folks, you know, on board with, with moving forward with the, with the Engage Health Service.
All right. How do we, how will we determine if this is worth the money?
Well, what we're, what we're trying to reduce is our catastrophic claims. I mean, our catastrophic claims in comparison, you know, we were at 57 the year before. And from an industry norm perspective, for a group our size, our number should have been in the 30s. And so, if we're not seeing that, if we're not seeing movement there, then, then this isn't working. And so, that, that, that should be easy to see. But, but also just the, I'm hopeful that the overall severity of our claims, the average severity of our claims would come down because of the, the number of folks that would be, be reached out to. You're always going to have claims.
Right, right. No, we know that.
And so, we're just trying to reduce the severity of our claims.
All right. So, we'd be looking at that data then next year when we decide? I've forgotten now if this has renewals involved in it. Probably does.
Yes, ma'am. But, but I mean, since I'm, I'm held accountable for the health fund, I mean, it, it's got to be producing or else we'll.
Could we? Thank you. Because you promised to balance budget. Right. Could we, thank you, because you promised a balanced budget. Could we maybe ask that you, someone make a note and we could have a reminder about seeing some stats on this?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. No problem.
Because there's just a lot of money, and I would like for it to be used wisely.
Sure. No, I, I totally understand. I mean, we're, our, our goal is to not have a premium increase in 2017. We're really trying to kind of move the needle when it comes to claims, especially the, the larger claims. And we're confident if we're able to do that through, you know, the diabetes side and, and this side with the other at-risk folks that.
And maybe the surgeries too.
And the surgeries. I mean, so we're, we're taking some action that's a, I mean, unconventional in comparison to some others, but we're not the first ones doing this. So.
Yeah, I'd like to see that for all those, the diabetes, the surgery, you know, see some type of statistics.
As we go, absolutely.
Use, and then whether it saves us in the long run.
Right. Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Other questions on this?
Yeah, can the trustees get in on that deal? Because after tonight, I feel like an employee, unpaid employee.
I'll, I'll let Mr. Spears address that question. That's an HR question.
I feel you, Mr. Reitz. All right. Moving on now, number four, which is the band and orchestra instruments. Do we have questions on this, Mrs. Tossan?
Why do you want an extra $100,000?
I can speak to that and Bob.
Well, come on up, Bob, just in case.
Mr. Drew did a needs assessment, and we had 4.5 million needed to replace aging instruments, those that are 15 years or older, and to replace them over the next seven years, as well as provide instruments and furniture for program growth. Mr. Bassett had budgeted 500,000 per year for the next seven and a half years to provide instrument growth, 3.7 million, but an additional 100 million, 100 billion.
Can I have that?
An additional 100,000 is, is needed because of the aging instrument, the furniture, and also when you buy the, the instruments, you have to have storage for them as the program grows, riser replacement and so forth. Currently, there's an instrument bid in place for 500,000 per year, renewable each year. And purchasing the supplementary items adds 100,000 per year. And they also want to increase the number of vendors because they think that will make it more competitive. Bob may be able to.
Did we not budget appropriately? Did we not, did it come out differently than we thought? I guess that's, that's, what's the bottom line?
Well, I think over the seven and a half years that, that Mr. Drew is planning all these replacements, yeah, I think it, I think it just came up a little bit short, and he needed additional vendors as well. So, it, it was a second look that was taken.
So, we needed additional vendors because the ones we originally had didn't provide everything we needed?
Yeah, different kinds of instruments. So, there, there are a wide variety of instruments, and, and it, it takes really quite a, quite a good number of vendors to cover all of that.
So, is this $100,000 a year more we're looking for?
Yes.
That's a big miss. That's, that's, that's a big miss.
I, I feel you.
Does nobody else think that's a big miss?
No, I, I do think it is. I do think it is. But I think, and so what I heard her say was that.
He conducted a needs assessment and determined that we had quite a few aging instruments, 15 years or older, and he wants to replace those over a seven and a half year period in addition to providing instruments for growth.
Right. So, that, but that was the initial, I think, Dr. Hill, that was the initial study, because we, we discussed this house, there were so many instruments that were old, and that was the initial three and a half million, or whatever it was, which I can't read it exactly.
So, I mean, I'm, I, I'm a band person. I was in band four years. I have kids in band, so yay, fine arts, yay, band. It just is a big miss in the budgeting, you know? I, I don't know. I just don't understand.
Do they miss on the budget? It seems like he's budgeted this amount. He was trying to get the purchasing in line with the budget.
It's in the budget, and I would have to go back and look at the, whenever the board made the approval of the 3.3. I mean, I think at that time, we, we were estimating, we were estimating more on a recurring basis. I mean, I, I just think when, when this was put together, the, the, the follow-up bid, it was, it was, it was at 500,000. And, you know, I mean, I don't, from a budgeting perspective, it wasn't, it wasn't missed. It's, it's in the budget.
Well, no, it's 600,000. The original was 500,000 was the approved amount. We're, now we're at 600,000.
Well, 600,000 is in the budget.
I think part of the issue is that the last solicitation was in 2013.
Right.
And he didn't do all this planning until after that time. Because that was, I mean, I can reflect back, I got here in April of 2013, and it was a year after that that he, you all, the board approved the multimillion dollar kind of catch-up.
I remember that.
And so, I think he's just been, I don't think it's a miss, a real-time miss. I think he's had a plan, but since, you know, going back to the last bid, he needs to expand the, he needs to expand the procurement to match the plan he had in place, if that makes sense.
So, it might be helpful, I don't know if it would help anybody else, but it might be helpful for me to see that. So, can we see the original plan and kind of, you know, where the differentiation is and make sure, I don't, and what, what do we budget for that? And if I could just see the, I mean, that would be helpful for me.
Right. So, it says there was an RFP July 8, 2013, which was for the 500,000. Then, the board approved in March of 2014, which would have been 18 months ago, an increase in, of 3.3 million dollars for a district-wide refresh.
No, and that, and that was part of our one-time catch-up. Okay, you know, we, we were doing well. And so, so I think what, and I remember talking about it at that time, that the estimate for the ongoing maintenance was going to be more than 500,000. At that time, I, I wasn't aware of the July 8, 2013. I mean, Bob, neither Bob and I was here at that time, that, that that was at 500,000 a year out there as an ongoing procurement. The, you know, the 3.3 was definitely a one-time deal, wasn't meant to, you know, carry, carry forward.
So, okay, so just to maybe, could, would it be possible for you to get together the history of this and?
Sure.
And would that help you?
Yes, thank you.
And then, if this is the, you know, maybe you could write us a paragraph or something.
Right. No, I mean, that's okay. I mean, but, but from a budget perspective, it's, it's in the, it's in the plan. We're not adding, we're not adding to the budget.
Would you like more detail about his needs assessment?
Well, let's get the, we'll get the plan and get the history together.
Right. I don't think we need to, you know, we don't need a whole lot of information because I think we were comfortable with, I, we were comfortable with all of that, but just trying to track down where, where the disconnect was. And maybe it was just, we did two things and they didn't quite align, and so now we're trying to make them align, and that might be the situation.
That would help.
Let's just clarify it if we could for next week, please. Sir. Thank you. All right. Moving on, school office furniture and related services. Do we have questions on this? Yes? No? I do. Well, this agenda item refers to a plan, but then it says that the plan hasn't been developed. I'm trying to find the language now. And I'm, feel nervous about that. Let me find. Oh, shucks. Still learning to scroll. Paragraph two, I think. This is not.
I don't see that.
You don't see it? I don't see it there either. But I did read that there was supposed to be a plan, and then I said, where's the plan? I'm still looking, sorry. Maybe it was in the memo. I think the plan was referenced in the memo. Ha. From August 20th, "No standards have been established for the modern classroom. However, given some time and feedback from school administrators and teachers on what works well, such standards will be developed."
Yes, Mrs. James, right. At the present time, we have not purchased any of what you might call 21st century furniture for the classrooms with just very few exceptions. We equipped Elementary School 46 with a few stand-up desks, but Elementary 46 is still a, a traditional kind of school. We have an opportunity with the three elementary schools that are due to come online in a couple of years to begin to assess and develop 21st century standards, but that's not something you'd want, want to do in a vacuum. And it's not, it's something that you'd want to do in collaboration with the architects, the classroom teachers, the school administrators, and so forth. So, what you're referring to is, is true, in that we, we don't have standards right now established for the 21st century schools, but we will be developing those standards. The furniture, the furniture bid is expiring, so we, we need to have this new furniture bid in place so that we can continue to order furniture for both the traditional schools and as we develop the 21st century standards to be able to equip those schools as well. So, really, the intent of this particular board item is to be as flexible as possible so that we can support those standards as they are developed. But right now, we really don't know what those items are going to be. That's a discussion that we have to have with architects, school principals, teachers, design and construction, and get everybody on the same page. And then, it's a wonderful opportunity, these three elementary schools, because we can establish standards that we can then roll forward as we go and build other schools and re-equip schools.
Thank you, Mr. Fazakli. Mr. Rosenthal?
So, I guess, since this isn't necessarily, since we don't know what we want to buy yet, why, why do we have to worry about this right now?
Because our present bid is expiring.
I think, I think, you correct me if I'm wrong.
I realize we're not getting ready to spend this money. This is just an RFQ or RFP or whatever.
We are, and I think that's what distinguishes, that's what we need to distinguish. There's two things, there's two tracks here. We're going to spend, opening these schools in the, in our regular buy on purchase, or spend on purchase, we're going to spend the same amount of money over the coming five or six years. The question, and the plan Grail was referring to, and that Bob is talking about, has to do with whether we're going to spend it on 21st century type of furniture, the new style, or the more traditional. But we're going to be outfitting new schools and, and buying school furniture under this bid right away because it's about to expire and we need a new bid. The only question mark that we don't have a plan for is what we're going to buy, which old, more traditional or the more modern learning environment, equipment.
It's like 2.7, 2.7 million we spent in, in the 15, 16 year. I mean, that's what's in the plan now, and that'll be including all the furniture that we need for the opening of Sullivan. And so, you know, that'll be, so 2.7 is what we're expecting to, to purchase this year, and we need to get a bid in place, you know, to be able to, to make the purchases.
So, I, I understand that. So, we need to have some type of contract in place in order to keep buying furniture for this year. And that's, I think, good. And I'm in favor of furniture.
Me too.
But I am concerned that this is a lot of money for a plan that we don't have developed. And I feel uncomfortable as a trustee, voting for five years' worth of a plan, that I'm not sure what it looks like.
I agree.
Okay. Let me see if I can say this another way.
Okay.
The only thing we're asking for here is a broad array of furniture vendors, which we do every time we do a bid anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And the authorization to spend money, which is the typical amount we would generally spend on furniture anyway. There's nothing extraordinary about this bid, other than it's expanding the list of vendors to, to add more vendors than we typically purchase from. We typically, this list generally is JR and some of these other companies that do very traditional classroom furniture. So, the only ask here is to expand the list of vendors and manufacturers. The dollar amounts would be the same regardless.
Yes, sir. And I understand that. But I also understand that we're changing the way we do school and FORP and IST. And I think it's important that the board of trustees and that the community sees the board of us trustees engaging in that conversation, rather than that decision being made where we're not engaged in it. And I feel a little uncomfortable just saying, go ahead and we'll find out later what happens. I guess I, I'd like to be a little more engaged or more intentional about that.
With, can you share what aspect you're referring to, engaged with what aspect of it?
Yes. These things that Mr. Fazakli referred to in, when we open our new style schools and the new style furniture and accessories that we might use in them. We've also discussed in this boardroom, transforming some of our existing facilities with new types of furniture and new styles of furniture, and as a means of changing our instructional style. And so.
Well, Mrs. James, can we, can we come back to you as these discussions with the architects, the classroom teachers, the principals, design and construction, as these discussions mature, can we come back to you with samples, pictures, what have you, of things that we feel would be the, the right items to equip the new schools with?
Yes, I expect you to. But I'm afraid that if I say yes, or we say yes, and it's not just me, it's us as a group, say yes to this, that how, how will we, these things come back to us? They'll come back in the year 2021.
Well, I think that if you go back just in the last couple of months, you've just approved this evening the ed specs. So, you've given clear direction to us in what your expectations are in regards to new schools. So, I do, for the design of those new schools and the 21st century learning features, so to me, I think the timely, the time-sensitive aspect of this is when this expires very soon, we will not be able to purchase any furniture at all. And I don't think that's what your intent would be. So, it seems to me that the answer comes, comes back to, well, the win-win between what Bob proposed and what you've suggested is, whether it's a workshop or whatever setting it is, we need to now take the ed specs and the, the recent workshops you've had on 21st century learning and extend that into a greater dialogue with other leaders in, in our, our district, the educators who are going to be running the schools, and then bring back to the board, perhaps in a workshop setting, you know, the direction we intend to go before we begin purchasing new age kind of equipment.
Well, why is it five years instead of one year?
Just to expedite work, because if we have to do this every year, it's a major process to do these bids.
So, it's a consolidate?
Typically, Ms. Tossan, we, we do one year with four renewing options. So, the, those bids often are five-year bids anyway. And what I've tried to do in this item is, is give more of a cost breakout on a year. And what I've tried to do in this item is give more of a cost breakout on a year-by-year basis, because these years are going to be quite different because of the new school construction. So I didn't want to put 2.7 million dollars and say, or 2 million and say, you know, we're going to have that on a recurring basis, when I know we're not. You know, when that, when those three elementary schools open, we're going to have a much greater expense that year than we will have in other years. So this bid is really no different, because normally, we would have one year with four renewing options, and almost always, those renewing options would be accepted by the district unless there was some reason to terminate the bid. So we normally do have bids that often are five-year terms.
So it's because you normally have a five-year bid term?
Right, and I can add to that, that since I've been on the Board, we used to, these contracts used to come to us every year, even if they had renewal options in them, they came to the Board every year. So we still can have this existing contract, and it can come back to us if we ask for that each year for renewal, rather than giving Dr. Dupree or his designee authority to renew it, as I think is currently in the, in our procedures, or I don't know, we maybe have passed a resolution about that or something. We'd have to look at that. But, I don't know, I would li, I, I'll leave it there, but I'm kind of interested in a plan. Does anybody else have anything on this one?
So when you say these bids, these, have these vendors locked in prices for five years? I mean, why, that's what I'm trying to get at also, is why we have to lock these things in for five years?
Well, we have, the bid is really broken out into three separate parts. So we have a, what we call a core list of furniture items that we order repetitively, but these have been more for the traditional classroom, not for the 21st century classroom, student desk, teacher desk, those kinds of things. Those have been around for a long time, and those standards are established. So we put those out on what we call a core list, and the vendors bid against those items, and they bid hard-dollar prices. So we get hard-dollar prices for those items, which are, they're, I wouldn't say they're locked in for five years, because prices are subject to change, but they would be, they would be what we call firm-fixed prices, and if there were any changes in those prices, they would have to be notified to us in advance. We would have the opportunity to renegotiate, or even the opportunity to go to another vendor if we're not happy with those prices. Now, the items that fall off of that core list, we call catalog items, and those prices are bid on discount levels. So for instance, Vendor A might bid a discount level of 25% on a certain furniture line, and Vendor B might say 30%. So we would look at those discount levels and make pricing determinations from that. And then in this bid, all, that's the second aspect of the bid. And so also, there's one additional aspect, and we just make it known to the vendors that we have the legal option, if we need to exercise that option, to go to a cooperative to buy a certain piece of furniture that may not be available from their core list or from their own catalog. So again, you know, the intent, considering where the district is right now with regard to furniture, was to make this bid very, very open, with the understanding that over the course of time, as standards on 21st century schools are established, that we would, we would, we would be narrowing this down to, to items that would be usable in all of the schools.
Mr. Rosenthal, I think when we, if we were to approve this list, then they have authorization, authorization to spend that much money from that, from the attached list of vendors for that, in that particular year. That's what we do.
Yeah, I guess the question is, what happened if there, if there's new vendors that come along for something that we're not sure we need yet, or that's not, doesn't exist yet that we may want?
And, and we can always add vendors. I don't think that's an obstacle. We can always add vendors.
Well, I guess, you know, if they think that this is what they're going to spend over the next five years, I mean, we've got four, three, four schools coming online. I don't know, I mean, certainly, we're not, we're not going to go through the list and try to say that's too much, or not enough, or whatever, I mean...
Yeah, we would certainly like to come back to you after, after we've had sessions and meetings on this, and come back to you and show you what, what staff is thinking with regard to these three elementary schools, and get your approval on those things.
Just a point of clarification, so if we don't sign it or agree to it right now, then we don't have the agreement with these vendors, right?
That's true.
And then, we can, so, I mean, are we, are we ready to purchase things right now?
Yes. We always have needs for replacement items that might break in the schools, or, you know, there are constant furniture needs that come to our department.
And then in the spring, we'll be needing to order the furniture for elementary, for the Sullivan Elementary School.
So, and when does this contract end? Is it June? Well, it says June 14th.
This month.
Huh, this month? So if we don't agree to it in September, and let's say hypothetically, it dissolves, and then October, what happens? You go back for another bid process?
If you don't agree to it, the only avenue that we have to purchase furniture would be through cooperatives, and I don't think we could get good prices, particularly on the traditional items that we know we're going to need. The way the pricing works is that the best prices that we'll get are from the core list, because those items are well-defined, and we've been using them for a long time, and the vendors get very competitive on those items when they're bidding. If you don't pass this, you'll take the core list away from us. You'll also take away from us the vendor catalogs that are available to us, and the only avenue that we'll have left is the cooperative purchasing arrangements by the Byboard.
Or you go, go start renegotiating these, put out another RFP or whatever, right?
Right, but that wouldn't get us any further down the road in knowing what the plan is.
Be the same thing, right, and just a couple of months down the road, yeah. Okay.
All right. Moving on now to kitchen equipment. I probably have a very unnecessary question on kitchen equipment. I forgot, I didn't have one. All right, move, any questions on kitchen equipment? Next is fire protection systems. Have a question on this one? Nope. Okay. Parking lot repairs and site lighting installation at Lake Olympia Transportation. Question on that one? All right, we're cruising now. We're to the IT closet power refresh.
Yeah, I had some questions on that. I had some questions on that.
All right.
Hang on, let me get here.
I do too. I'll have to find my papers.
Okay, so, I guess, mainly it had to do with the job order contracting. As you probably know, this has been in the papers recently with respect to School District 2R East, HISD, and they had some issues with their job order contracting. And one of the examples they gave was, ever given an estimate, like in this case, 2.9 million dollars, and guess what? The price was 2.9 million dollars. How about that? So, these are estimates that you're giving us, right?
Yes, sir.
So, how do we know that we're getting, one, good estimates, and that this is actually the best way to do this?
I would defer the procurement details to Bob. However, what we do is, right now, we have needs for, at AV1 of our closets, to increase the power to support the switching equipment that we have, that we need to put in to support the wireless, as well as the security cameras.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, reading through this, you know, a week or so ago, I didn't have any questions on what you needed. My question was really more toward, you know, is this the best way to go about this versus getting other types of bids or...
We, our original thought on this was that we would put this out to CSP competitive seal proposal. Now, both the CSP method and the JOC method are available to a school district under Chapter 2269 of the Government Code, so either one is a legal procurement. But we, we only received one bid each time when we put the CSP out, and we had had the experience of doing some of this on a JOK over the summer, and the pricing was actually better that way. And the flexibility is better under a JOK, too. Now, I'm trying to be real careful with, of course, I'm aware of all that you, our neighbors to the east, so, there's a statute that, that says the Board of Trustees should approve the JOK methodology as a delivery method if the price tag is going to be more than $500,000. That's what this item is for. It's not asking you to approve any particular expenditures, because we would have to come back to you with that as those things are developed. But based on our experience with having gone out for CSP twice and not having had good results that way, we think the best way to go about this now is to go ahead and get your approval to let us proceed with analyzing this work on a JOK basis, and then we would come back to you with those planned procurements as they, as they develop.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Fazakli, since this was issued as a competitive seal proposal twice before, am I to understand that plans and specifications have already been prepared for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and so, we just had one bid each time?
Yes, sir, and so it's very hard to say that that was a competitive solicitation, since we only got one bid.
Okay, as the numbers come in from the JOK contract, I guess we'll be able to, to tell, but we need to get this moving, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, you know, with the JOK procurement, they work from a unit price book. They have competitively bid a coefficient. Are we using the RS Means Unit Price Book?
Yes, sir.
So there are really two components. One is the coefficient that they bid, and, and the second is the City Cost Index, CCI, which adjusts these prices regionally, whether you're in New York City or Sugar Land, Texas. And so, when a JOK cost estimate is prepared, it's extremely detailed. Who's going to be reviewing the, the JOK cost estimates?
We're going to get the design and construction team to look at them, as well as the technology folks.
Okay.
We provide a load, and we're going to rely on our friends with facility construction.
Of course, I'll look at them as well, so, I mean, we'll be sure that everything is done in accordance with the...
So, Mr. Cleaver, your group's going to review it?
Yes, sir. It would be either Oscar or Tom.
Okay. So they, they're familiar with the reviewing job order contract cost estimates, and it's quite detailed?
It is very detailed, lots of line items.
Okay. So if we have a job order, I don't think that we have similar issues with JOK that some other entities have had. We don't have those issues here, and so I really don't see any issue moving forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have any other comments or questions regarding the purchasing? All right, then we'll move on to the next item, which is the minutes. Do we have any questions or corrections to the minutes, Mr. Rosenthal?
No.
Thank goodness. Just keeping me honest, aren't you? Next, we have Item J, which is the nomination of individuals for election to the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And we've previously nominated Mr. Key and Mr. Adam Abramcheck, I think is the name. It's somewhere in there, maybe, yes, at the bottom, Abramcheck and Mr. Key. Do we have any questions about that? Okay. Then the last item is our audience items. Mr. Lever, you're still here, bless you. You may be our first speaker tonight, and you have three minutes, and thank you so much for staying.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Take your time.
Good evening. I'm Fred Lever, resident of the Colony Meadows subdivision. I live on the street directly behind the Colony Meadows Elementary School. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed multi-purpose pavilion at the school. I represent an ad hoc committee from our community who are overwhelmingly repol, overwhelmingly opposed to you accepting the PTO gift of that pavilion. And therefore, I'll insert a little comment. Thank you for sending it back for reconsideration, because that was my summary request, is that you do so. But I would like to take another minute or two and tell you a little bit and that more of why we oppose it. We heard about the proposal in October of the large cover. That area is directly against the houses on our street. We are and are still concerned with the pavilion being used after dark and being attractive to older teens and young adults. Such after-hours use of elementary school facilities is a safety and security concern for our residents. Some of those activities are presently ongoing, even though there is no large coverage structure to help attract them, and so we do not wish to have that increased. There are, as we can, best we can tell, limited security operations in the evening hours at elementary schools. We fully expect that construction of such a cover would impact our neighborhood in a negative way. However, we would not be opposed to a PTO gift that is more age-appropriate for an elementary school, not attracting older people playing or doing things after hours. To show you our overwhelming opposition, on January 10th, our neighborhood group, Neighborhood Watch Group canvassed the neighborhood. We reached 66% of the homes. We reached 66% of the homes. 91% of the people contacted were signing the petition in opposition to the construction. That is 245 adults. 245 adults, all signing the petition to oppose, and they're all potential voters in your district. I'm the guy that sent you a request in May to conduct an audit. It was conducted. We appreciate you responding to that. However, we found it had considerable inaccuracies and not nearly as complete as we had hoped. We found it unsatisfactory. So, again, in summary, we, the closest neighbors to the school, are opposed to this project in its present form, and we do appreciate that you are sending it back for reconsideration in order to foster and continue fostering good relationships between your schools and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. We have one other speaker, and that is Sally Roden, speaking, I believe, on the same topic. Ma'am, you'll have three minutes, and Mrs. Tassan will be timing.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sally Roden, and I am a former PTO president at Colony Meadows from 2012 to 2014. And I was a part of the original suggestion into looking into the structure. I served for one year under that recommendation, so they started the investigations. After I left, those recommendations and suggestions and investigations continued. I was, that final year, 2014 to 2015, I was a parent. I was no longer on the board, but I was a PTO member. Knowing what had happened, I was interested, obviously, in what was going to happen and how this project was to move forward. There was very little communication made to the parents as a whole, in my mind, too little for such a big project. And therefore, I very much appreciate you sending it back, having it follow the correct channels with open communication, both to the community, but also to the parents as a whole. Because, yes, this is a huge project, and I believe that as many parents as are involved in that, they need to know where their money is going, what it is being spent on, and also what it avoids, what it can't create, what it can't get for the teachers, the parents, and most importantly, the children. That's basically all I wanted to say. So, I'm not for or against it, but I do want it to follow the proper procedures.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here tonight and staying to the bitter end so that you could speak with us. I believe that concludes our agenda. Ms. Hellinger, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I move that this meeting is adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.